This conference will now be recorded.
So on the select board side, we have myself, Justin, as president down hall.
Susan Cooper, president town hall.
On the finance committee, it's Michelle Miller and.
Frank Abish from the finance committee.
So since we don't know if Scott is going to be here, we should probably just get right to it. Do you guys, I think the agenda is formally listed as capital plan and special town meeting items. Would you be opposed to going through the special town meeting items first, some of which we've already talked about, just to get that out of the way?
You know, my bad that I didn't put our recommendations to the select board as to our interim member onto our agenda.
Which would be really helpful because then we could act, or it's not on our agenda.
It's not on our agenda.
Yeah, yeah, continue to work on capital plan and special town meeting articles.
Right.
Make that as a public comment because you've got correspondence minutes and public comment.
Yeah, I mean, if you already dealt with that last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
We talked about it.
We have a recommendation for you.
And if they, if they emailed the select board, we could handle that tomorrow too.
Yeah, I mean, we could also, we have a full agenda tomorrow.
Maybe.
We can, we can probably wait a week.
Probably given these developments, yes.
Would it, would it, so if you're not opposed to, we can, we can talk about where we are at with the special time meeting warrant. So the first item in no particular order, but that I think the select board more or less is agreed upon, is the tree work at Bigwell Park, which we all know is closed right now. So this is based on an estimate from John Field and the contract that the town has with John Field that we need to abide by. And I believe it's twenty five thousand six hundred, so that's pretty straightforward. I think if we want to hold the meeting on October fifteenth, which is Saturday, we need to sign the last regular select board meeting to sign, and we're not, would be the twenty eighth. So I would hope that we.
On September.
Twenty eighth of September. I would hope that we could meet the twenty seventh of September, the latest, to vote on whether or not the finance committee approves these articles or not. Because certainly we could have differing opinions and we could say the finance committee does not support this article, or the vote was one to one, or two to one, or one to two, and will probably denote the same thing for the select board. You're going away for a couple of weeks, right?
Even Saturday, but I don't, I, internet is not always functioning where I'm going, but I can try to be, but maybe we could have a Zoom meeting prior, sometime prior to your final meeting. Cause we haven't really talked about the special town meeting article.
No.
Which is, is, are you separating the community center from the Bigwell Park?
That is, I think, the tentative understanding.
For what is your reasoning for that? Just curious.
Because I think they're two very different projects. At Bigwell Park, the trees are down and or hanging, and we, it's not safe to have the public down there. So that's closed until we do tree work. At the community center is still operating and people are going in and out of building.
It's not an imminent task.
It's not, it's not preventing the community center from being open. The reason why we're even considering doing the work mid-year is because it's, now a pattern is developing with every major storm, another big white pine comes down, and because there's some very unsightly broken off stems. So this would be about five, roughly five trees that are snapped in half, removing the bottom half, and then about another twenty trees that look fine. They just, the reasoning provided by the tree warden and the director of operations is that once this stand starts losing trees, it becomes weaker and it's more, its tendency is to continue to lose trees.
And if we don't do the work all at once, if we broke it into two pieces and took the now broken trees and left the others, it, there's an extra cost every time they come out. So when those other ones break, then we're paying, we end up paying a larger amount.
Right.
Because of the set up fee and all that, instead of paying for once to take them out. Not, I hate taking down trees.
Well, I'm fine with taking down trees, I just hate spending money.
Well, actually, I, I don't like taking down trees, but taking down trees that are likely to cause a problem.
I know.
And I'd like to see us have a plan of what we're going to put in place of them, but that may be.
Maybe they don't need to have anything in place of them.
Well, one thing to note is this is not quite, it's not a clear cut, so it's only mature white pines. There are a couple other deciduous trees and others that, when I went over with Gemma, he pointed out that would not be removed. So it would not be a clear cut of that whole scan, but it would certainly be the vast majority of it. But just let, let me lay out all seven possible items and then we can get it, we can go into each one individually. So we have those two tree works, we have unpaid bills from fiscal year twenty two, from the, mostly from the cemetery commission, but also from the council on aging. And then blank, and the last one is a highway department. It's a relatively small bill, but it essentially, essentially fills that.
Transfer station.
Transfer station. We can look into the specifics. I know the biggest bill is mowing the cemeteries and then the other ones. We can, we'll definitely have the specifics before we decide whether or not we support them. The, then these next four items, the select board hasn't decided whether or not to put them on special time meeting warrant, but you should be aware of them because they are possibly going to end up on special time meeting warrant. The first one's fifteen thousand dollar request from eight town regional school district planning board. They requested fifteen thousand dollars from each town and from both school committees. Right now, the select board is considering whether or not to add this to the warrant. We haven't added it yet. The next possible item is the park commission is requesting ten thousand dollars for the ball field, but the select board is responding and saying, we need to see a bid or multiple bids, and also your numbers of the money that you have in your general account, and is it all allocated? So that's another maybe, and we don't know how much. The next one is the conservation commission agent. The select board has, I think, more or less agreed at our last meeting that this won't go on the special time meeting warrant, but they're requesting a line item in the budget rather than paying the agent out of the revolving fund, have a line item to pay the agent. And what we're going to recommend, I believe, is paying the agent out of the revolving fund. If the revolving fund dips below zero, we could make up, cover that gap at the annual town meeting. But we're also recommending that they increase the fees at the same time to cover the cost of the agent.
And just so you know, there, there's good reason to do that. Our fares are a hundred bucks, Shekels one fifty, Barrington's one twenty, and about to go to one fifty.
So.
And we're what?
We're one hundred. So generally, it would be completely reasonable to go to one fifty. I, I only found that out the last couple of days, so I thought I'd share it.
And so though that item in particular is probably not going special time anymore, but I'm making you aware of it in case it does. And then the last possibility is a bill from town council Jeremiah Pollard for the human appeal. We, I believe we were given an estimate back in May for thirty five hundred to four thousand for the appeal. And this would bring the total bill to something like nine thousand or ten thousand dollars. So we are exploring with our current town council about our obligation to pay this bill. And we haven't come to any conclusions yet, but it's a possible item for special time meeting. We may, like we did with the Green and Hayford bill, we went back and said, no, we said sixteen thousand and you're getting sixteen thousand. I don't know how this bill will end up.
How did that work out?
That was that.
Really?
Yeah. Donna wrote us one.
How did I miss out on that victory?
Well, we didn't need, I think, the finance committee, I guess, and then, but.
No, I mean, I'm happy.
So, well, I mean, so this is the thing that we're learning, or that I'm learning, is that if you are clear with a service provider, what your, what funds you have allocated, especially since we're a municipality, we don't, we can't legally spend funds we don't have. And so if we are clear and we say, you know, we have ten thousand dollars for the ball field, even if we don't necessarily have a contract signed by both parties, if we're clear about that limitation, we are not obligated to pay anything beyond that amount, but this is like lawyer stuff.
It's tricky too when it's litigation. Yeah, because everybody knows you just can't reliably predict what litigation costs.
But in this case, it was like, I believe, I think it was like two and a half times the high end.
It's a lot harder. Do we actually know what the, is, what the outcome of that is? It's still in process, right?
It's still in process.
Appeal is filed, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think the next, this is me speaking without really much understanding, other one Jeremiah said you went email with us. They filed the appeal. I don't think there's any more court dates, but.
That's what I re, I rewatched that meeting the other, yesterday, and so that, that was my impression.
Yeah. So those are four possibility, possible items. Like I said, the county agent is probably not going to end up on special time meeting warrant. Fifteen thousand dollar request from the school district planning board, the select board has made a decision. The park commission and the green park ball field, we just need better numbers. They really aren't, haven't been able to tell us yet how much money they might be able to put towards it and how much money it's going to cost.
What is it that they're going to do?
Do a ball field out back.
And is that the same ball field that we had a warranty on or like some kind of?
I think years ago.
Okay.
I vaguely, Melissa may know better. I vaguely heard about.
Well, I mean, Marcus was familiar about it yesterday.
Back when she was on the park commission.
Maybe that's what it was, but.
No, you know what it was? She meant basketball court.
Oh, that's what it was.
And, and, but she said ball field, and it confused me as well.
Right, right, right.
But no, this is the baseball or softball field. And you can take a look after the meeting, it's all grown in, there's no dirt. Appropriate, you know, the select board met with the chair of park commission last week. And I mean, I think we all agree it's something that would be really good to have done by next season. But we're just asking them for numbers, whether they can put four thousand towards it, or six thousand, or eight thousand, and how much is going to cost? Because they came and asked for ten thousand but didn't have a bid and didn't yet have a plan for the funds that they do have.
They don't really know what their own budget is, what they've spent or, you know, allocated for certain tasks.
Hello.
And they're trying to get those numbers together, plus they haven't been able to get a formal bid from anyone, although they repeatedly ask. Which anyways, trying to get a contractor knows is some kind of an issue. But the issue is that if we, if we wait for next year's annual town meeting to put it on the budget, they don't have a ball field next year.
They don't have a ball field?
Well, they wouldn't until July when you.
Well, you mean they can't play on it as a year?
It's pretty bad. Go look at it. I mean, I don't play ball, right? That's not my thing. So I've never walked back there till this is your guy's. But it's not a great condition. I, I suppose, you know, you can look at it different ways, but it's been neglected, and I think we had a lot of turnover in the parks commission. And because the budget season is never during baseball season, and nobody raised a huge ruckus, it never got any, on anybody's agenda and was neglected for a period of years.
What my, what comes to mind is that they're asking a hundred thousand dollars from the parker funds.
For the playground.
For a playground, which, you know, maybe is a little bit more of a Taj Mahal than it needs.
Well, I also think that, that a lot more people play on that ball field than play.
In Brooklyn.
I think it could also, we could, and the select board hasn't really discussed this, but I think out of all these items, the one that might appropriately come out of ARPA, in my view, is the ball field. It'd be a relatively small chunk of ARPA, it's people socializing outdoors, you know, in social distance and all that. I could see that as a possibility, but the select board hasn't discussed that yet.
I'm switching gears to the agent of one. You know, when Lucy and Jake were on the phone, did there anything that come up that ruled aid?
Yes, so we, I reached out to the school committee chair from each district and the superintendent from each district, and I heard back from Peter Dillon, and I'm, I'll read it right now, and I'll forward it to you all.
What is this rule aid?
Aid, they talked.
Rural aid, sorry.
Yeah, so one of the questions, Michelle, to get you up to speed, is they're asking, originally Berkshire Hills said, we'll give you sixty thousand of our rural aid money, and it's Southern Berkshire will give you sixty thousand. And then that would pretty much cover, because they're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand, so that'd be a hundred and twenty thousand. And the districts would cover that from rural aid money. Berkshire Hills voted to do that, Southern Berkshire is not at this time providing that. So let me just, this is Peter Dillon from Berkshire Hills, and I just simply asked how much rural aid money does Berkshire Hills have access to and what is the plan for using it? Because we're trying to consider if we might fund the school district planning board. And this is what Peter wrote. The Berkshire Hills Regional School District, School Committee had voted to allocate up to sixty thousand dollars from rural aid funds at the same amount that Southern Berkshire would do. He said neither district has yet received its rural aid funding. We anticipate that Berkshire Hills may get roughly a hundred and five thousand and Southern Berkshire seventy thousand. And then he said that they, Berkshire Hills plans to use some of those funds to support a part-time writing position, to support post-secondary admissions, and may additionally invest in psychological services in response to the pandemic. So they think they're getting about a hundred and five, we're willing to put up sixty towards this, but only if Southern Berkshire did. And then this is what Jane Burke, who's chair of the, of the Southern Berkshire School Committee said. She said, thank you for your interest. At its September eight meeting, there was a discussion of the request to contribute fifteen thousand dollars to the work of the board. The superintendent was asked to inform us of any fiscal issues we are now facing. So basically, Southern Berkshire, or at least Jane Burke, who's the chair of the school committee, is saying they might use their rural aid funds on this rather than on the merger. She said, they're not sure of what the actual amount of rural aid will be beyond a hint. We don't have a real number yet. An unanticipated audit of the district's insurance was just recommended with an unknown cost, so they might use it on audit. A hiring process is underway to replace the alcohol and director of building and ground food services. We are having to replace this unanticipated vacancy with two people, one for each aspect of the past job. And in crafting out the fiscal year twenty three budget, we gave the towns back a significant portion of the excess funds to suppress assessments. So according to Jane, it sounds like last year they took some of the rural aid money and gave it back to the towns. So that.
So that's in our original plan?
To lower the tax.
Or like the cash.
I, it probably went back.
It probably just came off the assessment.
Oh, yeah.
So we got raised.
Sounds like it went back.
Right, they would have reduced what we owed and that, that would have reduced our.
I am going to forward these both to all of you. We also reached out to the other towns involved, many of which had select board meetings yesterday and today.
So I talked to Renee Wood of Sheffield, they voted two to one to give this fifteen K, they're taking out of ARPA funds. The person who didn't support it felt, you know, just has some issues with how the process has gone forward. The other two.
Like what? I don't remember.
It's a long list.
Oh, no, no. Who was the person?
I, I don't know, didn't know his name off handle though, perhaps I should know, but I can find it for you. Renee and the third member, whose name I also don't recall because I didn't know it previously, both felt that we've gone this far, Bob Tomer.
Is the, is the name there?
Is the name there. That felt we've gone this far, we spent all this money, we need to come to completion. But they, she said that they were very clear, there'll be no more. That's it, like get it done, we're done. They also put in a pitch that they should apply for community compact grant monies to try and boost their, whatever they need, because there is money for regionalization, efficiency. So that was what they said. I got an email from Melissa saying that Egremont is going to put it on their special time meeting.
But also, at the same time, will the select board, the three members of, no, sorry, not the select board, the three members of the regional school district planning board from Egremont are going to make a report not in support of the decision of the school district planning board on how to move forward with the consolidation of the two districts. So they're putting it in front of their taxpayers, but the, all, there's only three members from each town, right? All three are writing an article, I don't know if they're putting it in the local newspaper.
Opposed to the regional.
Opposed, not to the whole group, not to the whole planning board, but to the plan that they're moving forward at this time.
Oh my God, what a headache.
So it's fifty thousand dollars. There's ARPA, there's, so here's the last thing about the special time meeting. We're talking most recently about using free cash, which has not been certified yet.
But it will be in October, right?
That's our understanding from Melissa and the accountant. Last year it was October, I believe. It's fairly early, but if they say they can get it done, it's probably more appropriate if we have stabilization set aside for things on the capital plan.
Wait, you don't, we might do some of the funding from the free cash when it's certified rather than from any other source, is that what you're saying?
Rather than from stabilization, really. So I do think it's a little bit of a tricky situation, but I think we've done it before and other towns do it, where we have to post a warrant fourteen days in advance. But if we know, or if we have a really good sense free cash will be certified and have a very good idea of what free cash will be, we can say it's going to be from free cash. And I think it wouldn't be outside of the spoke to amend it to stabilization in a pinch.
Well, couldn't you just say?
But Melissa.
From free cash or stabilization as a bill?
Yeah, or as chosen by voters.
Right.
So if, if free cash doesn't get certified, but then we can amend it on the floor to, to do stabilization instead.
I think it would be preferable to put it forward as free cash if we'd like to do that and then amend it on the board if we can.
Yeah. So, and the idea probably being that any free cash that we don't spend at this special time meeting, we'll probably spend at the annual town meeting and or use it to reduce the tax. I mean, probably leave, whether it's thirty thousand, fifty thousand, or a hundred thousand, whatever we.
Pour it back to that, yeah.
And whatever is in that policy. So that is the update. We don't have, we don't have, we haven't made decisions on, on some of these things, but at least we're all on the same page now about what the possible items are. I think those, as far as my sense of the select board, the two tree items and the unpaid bills, I mean, the unpaid bills are going to be on there if nothing else is, right? And then the two tree items, and then.
At the very least, one tree item is on there.
Yeah, I think definitely the Bigwell Park probably, and then the regional school district planning board, I have no sense. I think it's, I think if, I like what Egremont did though in some ways to leave it up to the voters.
I really, I, I'm, I, you know, I was going to say this tomorrow anyway. I said, I think, even having talked to Renee, she was like, that's a really interesting option. I like the idea of putting it to the voters. I mean, personally, I do kind of agree with Sheffield, like at this point, to not, this last piece, like they should have budgeted better. I don't like how much money they spent on all the consultants. But at this point, to not finish the thing seems irresponsible. Yeah, but, but I do feel like this is it, guys.
Right.
End of story and let the voters decide. And I also think there's something to be said for raising its visibility.
Absolutely.
To the voters, and I, I'm trying to figure out, like, I think, like, I was going to suggest tomorrow that we invite these folks to come and give their little pitch.
Which folks are we talking?
Lucy.
Lucy.
Yeah, let her come see how, like, I don't think their outreach has been very good. And I think if she goes to a town meeting and gets peppered with questions, she's going to see there are some holes in her plan that she better fill if she wants this to work.
So, you know, this is not probably the right time to ask this question, what is the plan?
Well, you really got to go.
Yeah.
You really have to go, any other one, it's, it's not as simple.
So, so more or less, you got, you got to look at it from a real point of view, but more or less, in brief, the plan is to merge the students' environment, not high school, and not ever high school, into one building on the campus and one in the mountain, but that middle schools and elementary state same.
And they would, it would be a brand new building.
That the state would.
That the state would significantly underwrite, and that's part of the timeline issue is that they lose that giant pie, it's a pretty giant pie, of state money. They want VOTEC, you know, they call it something else now, but vocational technical training in that building. And there's a bunch of other stuff involved, that's, that's the really short version.
And the reason that we're going to consolidate all of the high school streets into one brand new school is because there's not enough of them.
Yes, it's a declining population.
And they, well, they list more factors than that. You know, they said we'll have to pay for one administration instead of two. Resources, you know, skilled guidance counselors or teachers, you know, can work together instead of being part of two different.
The usual regionalization suggestions, less administration, although whether that actually happens, most of the time, I don't know.
But you take on Monterey, we'd have to pay, I guess it would be a bond to be building a little useful for them.
And they've sweetened the pot by claiming that the five towns are only going to pay ten percent of the new building and the three towns are going to carry ninety percent. And I know.
Because why?
Because, yeah, why? Go read this out.
Well, and the other thing is they don't, there's not a real concrete proposal set forth yet about payments. I mean, I think they had a finance subcommittee meeting sometime this week.
They have several, they have several subcommittees.
Yeah, and finance in particular is looking at differences to split up.
Yeah, operation, I'm looking at.
It'd be, well, it'd be a couple things, because it's how you split up the building or the new school, but then how you split up the assessments going forward.
Which is two different questions, but both really important. And also, what exactly would the new school be? They're kind of, they took the old school proposal and kind of added this on with some like hand weighing numbers to come up with what the school would cost. So there's a lot of that.
They love it, rip moss a land is what they're going to do.
I know, so the problems are real, but the pot of money is real too, that we're going to loss. Whether or not that warrants going forward.
Anyway.
I have more questions than answers.
Yeah, well, that's what I always say, you've got to have all the questions and.
Anyway, so that, that's the brief. But I think that bringing it in front of them and, and putting it on everybody's radar of what's going on, because, you know, saying that it's on the website, but with the website, everyone's like.
Yeah, right, I've got laundry to do.
Yeah, exactly.
So at this point, we're thinking the fifteen K parts and the conservation commission are not going on the special time meeting.
No, I think the fifteen K will go on.
You think, oh, okay.
Well, so these are, yeah, I mean, it's, we have to discuss more earlier, the select board.
We haven't sliced it, but I, I guessed it.
The fifteen K, I mean, that's the way I'm leaning, is probably putting it on there and then letting the voters decide. Because if we, you know, spend it out of ARPA or don't, or refuse to do it at all, I feel like that is probably not the way to go.
And I think there's too many benefits to putting in on the special time meeting if we're having one anyway. I think putting it in front of the voters so that they think about the issue alone would be reasonable to do.
Yes, I agree.
Parks, parks, we don't know. The problem is we don't, we can't put it on if we don't have concrete numbers, because right now we don't have numbers for how much money they have available, and we don't have money for how much it's going to cost. Other than.
Too many questions.
And then, but we may, we're going to ask for those, we asked for those last week. We're going to write a memo to parks tomorrow and, or send a memo tomorrow, and hopefully have a clear answer soon. The conservation commission agent is almost certainly not going to be on there, unless for some odd reason we change our minds, but I think the whole select board agreed. uh, to proceed forward and tell them to use revolving fund. And then the bill from Jeremiah Pollard, uh, we just don't know. We're gonna seek advice from Donna. I kind of wanted, uh, some time to look at the recording, 'cause there's a recording, the executive session to see.
Did you get a chance to?
I have not.
I, so I, it was pretty, it, it took ages, 'cause you gotta find the spot, it's pretty far along. He said sixty-five hundred to, or no, thirty-five hundred to four thousand. You did, you guys remembered correctly, that was the number. He was hesitant to give an estimate because they said there were a lot of unknowns. But that was the estimate he gave. Um, my issue is, I am concerned about how little money got put in litigation this year. Um, I understand the circumstances under which that happened, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have issues with this bill, but I'm concerned about that number for other reasons, and wondering whether if we're having a special town meeting, we might not wanna consider readdressing that particular issue rather than having to call another special town meeting at a later date because of litigation.
Yeah, and so for the most, so we have another pending litigation against it now. I think the insurance, it sounds like the insurance company's probably gonna pick up the whole.
Well, I, I think that's true.
Take, do it, take care of it.
Let's just hope that's the only one.
But maybe we can gain some clarity on that between now and next week.
Okay.
Um, because I agree with you, I mean, it was a, it was a, we underbudgeted.
I was concerned at the range.
We, we, we underbudgeted for litigation, uh, for sure. However, we had explained our budget to, if I'm not mistaken, to Jeremiah, and explained that we needed a couple invoices or an invoice before then of fiscal year because we didn't have a lot of money budgeted for the next year.
You did. You did.
It was the week before town meeting.
And it was already, the warrant was already finalized.
So, um, that may, so we're gonna ask Donna, are we obligated to pay? Here's the facts, you know, here was an estimate we were given, here's what we said, here's what we heard. Are we obligated to pay? And then it's as simple as, if she tells us, yeah, we need to pay, hopefully we'll know by next week, then we'll probably pay. And if she says, no, don't pay, I'll write a letter, then we probably won't pay. Um.
I'll see if I can find that time stamp, my, my memory is it might have been in about an hour and forty minutes, you wanted to start watching.
Hour and forty? Wasn't that the beginning of the meeting?
That was a long, you would think so, but the answer is no. I thought we held that executive session at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know, it took me a long time to get through that sucker, and I was skipping. I actually, I actually resorted to, to giving the, um, the transcript and then skipping forward to try to find where the money, a lot of it was about the case itself.
Yeah, edit. Okay.
Um, and the money didn't get discussed till pretty far.
So we'll just, we're asking her, we're gonna get some facts together, and then we're either more or less obligated to pay or not, and we'll probably follow her advice. Last time, she took a look at the facts and said, you have a pretty good case to not pay. She wrote the letter, we haven't heard anything. Uh, we'll just, you know, try and get her all the facts we can and, and see what she says.
Yeah, and if we go into litigation with this new case, is she the person that handles, um, that, or is there a different litigation?
Would be the insurance.
Oh.
It would probably be the insurance who'd give us a defense counsel, um, and we probably wouldn't pay in that way. I mean, Donna may have some additional duties or responsibilities, but probably we wouldn't foot most of the bill directly. Um, so, but we, we can get more clarity on that before we call it coming.
So, um, just so I'm clear, the, this, uh, special town meeting warrant has to be posted on nine twenty-seven, which.
Assuming.
A Tuesday, I think.
So, no, wait, hold up. Uh, if we wanna go forward to October fifteenth, which we have tentatively set, I believe it's gotta be posted by October first or September thirtieth. Um, but the last regular select board meeting, you know, if we're talking Wednesday select board meetings, which we don't have to sign at a regular meeting, but we probably would, would be September twenty-eighth, the select board should be signing the warrant. And either on, at that meeting or at a previous meeting, I think the finance committee and select board should each vote, whether it's a joint meeting or not, on each item, whether you approve of the expense.
Okay, so you want to have a joint meeting on the twenty-seventh?
I think that would be preferable.
Is that the day of your, yeah.
In the off-chance, with all these different kind of questions looming overhead on some of these items, maybe we postpone, or not postpone, 'cause we haven't really officially set a date yet, but maybe we, we push it back a week or two.
What, the special?
Yeah, I mean.
I, I'm only hesitant to do it, but, 'cause it took us a while to even come up with that date where
Right, and not only that.
the court was willing to be there and the, you know, that we could get all the ducks in the road to have the meeting. And if you push it back too far, it's when you're pulled.
I was just gonna say that.
Right, yeah. So I'm hesitant to push it back if we can possibly work that.
Well, we. We can consider the fire station.
What do you do before we have the pavilion?
We can consider asking the fire.
What do you mean, inside the truck area?
Inside the truck bed. Um, we could ask, uh, if we can use that. Um, we're not married to the pavilion.
No, we're definitely not. Yeah, 'cause it's better in the truck bed, that's for sure.
So, that would be an option. I don't want to rush, you know, it sounds like we've kind of, Susan and I are kind of in agreement on this fifteen thousand, from the, at least preliminary agreement on this fifteen thousand request from the school committee. Um, the po- the Jeremiah Pollard legal bill, we're just gonna have to, it, more or less ask her lawyer. And then the county agent, we're more or less in agreement, it's not gonna be on there. So it would really be waiting on the park commission for some numbers.
But even if Pollard was less, we probably are still gonna need some. I doubt it's gonna go down to a gram for something, right?
Well, also, oh.
Well, what we might be able to say is, we told you next year, I have to read, listen to the audience.
Right.
We told you next year our budget is twenty-five hundred, so we only have, you know, 'cause we asked specifically, send us some invoices in this fiscal year, 'cause our budget next year is small.
I don't think, I didn't hear you ever say the number.
Yeah.
You said small, like.
Okay. So we'll have to see what she says, uh, and then, and then go from there accordingly. Um, that's also a, maybe a possible reserve, we could, the select board could possibly submit a reserve fund transfer request to the finance committee. Um, because it's, might be within the realm of, of what you have.
For Hume.
For Hume, yes.
For Hume. Yeah, I mean, that's, that'd be the only one. I mean, some of these other ones are so big. Like, we wouldn't ever submit a reserve fund transfer request for fifteen thousand for the school district planning board, because it would wipe you out and we wanna hear the taxpayer's statement. If any of these items we were, and like unpaid bills, we have to go to town meeting. Um, it would, if anything, it would be the Hume appeal, we might ask the finance committee for reserve fund transfer.
But then, uh, to go back to number one, I think, uh, it's safe to say we all agree that the Big Will Park situation needs to be addressed. Yes, then it's not so clear to me that we need, I mean, I understand all the physical, log- logistical, uh, financial repercussions of not taking down those trees, yes, they might fall, but on the other hand, it's, uh, it's not an un- it's, what is it, what is, what's the definition, unexpected expense, unbudgeted expense?
Hey, well, the storm was definitely.
And isn't there also some money due to us from the, as a storm?
There is a storm damage sub item in the highway departments, I think it's the general highway department account. There's a subline.
Or some state.
But that subline was more or less spent out when, uh,
Yeah.
whenever we had, we don't have anything available from the state, you know, the chapter ninety, which Frank brought up, or the winter assistance.
Winter harsh, yeah.
They're not, I don't think that they're applicable for this. The only other possible funding source for some of it might be maybe the tree ward. Uh, that would be the only thing, but his whole budget, this would put a huge dent in his budget, like more than half.
Right.
Uh, so that would be the only.
Especially at a time when we're cutting down all of these F.
Yeah. So, and I can under, I mean, I'm sympathetic, and I think that's why it's good to separate them out, both for our sake and for the town meeting's sake, that these are two very different issues. The trees at the community center are not down, they're all still standing. Some of them are broken in half, like about five of them are broken in half. But the, what was on the, what's on the ground has been cleaned up. Um, they probably are not, those bottom parts of the stem are pretty aerodynamic, they're probably not going anywhere soon. But the idea being, this is really now a pattern. I think Jim Hunt, and we could find the dates of the storms probably if we try hard enough. Jim Hunt has said basically every major storm in the past two years or so, another tall white pine in that stand comes down, and, uh.
If, if nothing else, if we keep a record of what comes down in this storm, in this storm season, um, by next annual town meeting, we'll have a pretty good case for whether we wanna spend money to prevent the problem.
Right. Yeah, I just think twenty-five thousand is a lot of money, especially to go. Okay, so we have to make a decision, uh, in two, two weeks at the latest.
At the latest, yeah. I think, you know, and look, here's the thing, if the park commission needs more time and they're getting bids, and for whatever reason, we all agree to, to push it back, the most, there's nothing, I mean, I guess the trees at Big Will Park are the only remotely urgent thing, because the school board is more or less gonna have to wait. They said they can operate for a few months, and if other towns start to put their money in, it's not urgent that we do ours. Um, the, and.
It's the unpaid bills.
The unpaid bills in Big Will Park, we all agree that they're real, they're the real deal.
Um, so none of these are for the most, or, you know, the unpaid bills we would like to get paid, but it's not out of the realm of possibility, we'd push it back a week or two if we need to.
It's been, I mean, I suppose if we could get indoors, the only question would be like, I know that they considered this, but the COVID numbers are rising.
They are?
Uh, they are.
Where?
Well, uh, in, in the last couple of weeks, I know at least six people who touched it positive. One in my barn, and there was a concern that, that a number of people may have contracted it. I wasn't, I haven't been there, but, um, there, it, I guess county-wide and just over the border in Chatham, um, that, what's it, it's Dutchess County? Or Columbia, Columbia County, Columbia County, I guess it's called. Um, so, I don't know what that.
I don't want nothing to do with it.
I don't want nothing to do with it either, but it could, it could end up being a problem if that is, if the numbers do start rising.
Well, we, we can reconsider that.
We might want.
Oh, you mean to do indoors for a meeting?
Yes.
So I, I did ask the moderator, and he does not want it indoors.
Oh, who's the moderator?
Yep, um, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a decision for the select board to make.
Yep.
Yeah.
So. Um, should we set the special town meeting to the side and talk about the capital plan for a little bit?
Oh, capital plan, we're on the.
It's just putting everything away.
Well, I just. You, uh, you have more stamina than.
Do you, do you, do you use the copier?
Uh, no.
Melissa, how do we use the copier?
Yeah, I know, we, we might need to solve that problem, 'cause this is now the second time.
Well, I give you all the codes on the bottom of the agenda when I send you.
No, I don't doubt I've been given the proper information, I just.
Well, here you can.
Printers are like my worst friend.
Sure.
We'll, we'll share, and.
Oh, the only thing, I'll go over it. The only thing we came back and we added, here's the building. We added the roof, the furnace, yeah, that's here.
Ah, this building, channel off, channel off.
And then, so then we came down here and added the tractor and cutter to put in, put in the ARPA funds.
Yep.
That's the way we did it, because then we met with Jim this morning, and then we did a follow-up email with Jim's. I did this afternoon to see if he had, what would those numbers look like for roof, uh, furnace here, and storage.
What are we timing with storage, like, in storage, like putting in cabinets, kind of thing, like?
Well. Cabinets, but you have to have, if you're going, you have, if you're saving records.
Right, it has to be controlled storage, yeah, flood, flood and park.
You have to have, yeah.
So can we, can we, 'cause how many buildings is it now responsible for? Town hall, library, community center, highway department, transfer station, shed. We should probably have a roof for all of the, right? Or, or an estimate, I mean, depending on, uh.
It should be on the capital plan, is what you mean, right?
Well, yeah, but if you look at the shed, the shed is a metal roof.
Thirty years, but we should put on that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we could do that. Um, I could, you know, what Michelle and I talked about was trying to get it organized so we understood everything, you know, 'cause I, I, from my perspective, I'm new, I'm like, okay, we got this one, we got that one, what about this?
Yep.
I mean, you know, you, you know, stuff happens.
And just because it's fun to exist that way and that it made sense to somebody doesn't necessarily mean they chose the best plan. Some of it might have to be like that, but sometimes it takes a fresh look to figure out a better way to organize it.
So, it, you know, I talked to Melissa a week or two ago, you know, we'll, we'll let her maintain the worksheet, you know, we'll give her some input on that. But I can sit down and talk to Jim and start getting the numbers so we know what the, are we talking next year, one year out, two years out, three years out?
The other thing I think that we could consider is, I think everything on here, we're talking about paying for our stabilization.
No, I don't, I don't, I think we, I, my first.
No, I don't think that we are. But I think we should put down some ideas of stabilization.
Yeah, I think.
Where?
Free cash is tough, 'cause you never know how much you're gonna have alone.
Well, you got chapter nine.
But I think, wait, I think you're getting ahead of that, our, I think we're merely trying to focus on a comprehensive listing
Chapter nine.
Yeah, we're trying to.
of everything that the town has to consider. And not only as capital plan, but some of the larger issues that have emerged, you know, like storage, the police department, you know, the, these other kind of random things. We're just trying to come up with like the biggest, fattest list that, that people will say, oh, well, I can have this or that, you know? We're trying to really give people enough information that they understand the size of what the town really needs, you know, the things that we're not doing, like the town hall is the easiest example. But anyway, and at that point, you know, then we can maybe be more ready to deciding how it's on, the things that emerge as priorities.
I, I like the idea of, of making a more inclusive and comprehensive list, so that we don't have things pop up out of the blue, okay, we need new roof.
Yeah, well, totally.
Or we need a new tractor. But I think where I'm getting at, what I'm getting at with the funding is the next question, once we have a comprehensive, well, comprehensive list of what, of all the things that the town owns or may need replaced, is where are the funds coming from? That way we can know how much to put away into stabilization.
Right.
And if we're planning on taking out loans rather than stabilization, we can coordinate the loans, you know, in a way that, you know, as one dies down, we take the next one out, and it's not all piled on top of each other, starting at the same time, ending at the same time.
No, obviously, you can't all that that.
And also, if we know what we're gonna need out of stabilization, we can know what to put in stabilization.
Yep.
Not that we ever have to, not that we're ever held to this against all common sense, but that we have a preliminary plan.
But you have, well, you need somebody to help you make a plan, and having a per, the, the, a good purview of what do we need to address? What are all the issues? Okay, how are we gonna pay for them and how are we gonna prioritize them?
Prioritizing, I guess.
Right, right, but first priority and second, how can we prioritize that?
I think that's gonna be the hardest, the hardest.
How are we gonna pay for them? But, but you need to know what you gotta address first, right?
Well, and that was part of.
But that's a good hidden plan.
That was the part of, of the letter that I shared with you that what I addressed to the, we addressed to the planning board.
Planning board.
And, um, was just, uh, the master plan is nothing without funding.
It, that's true, except I, I think traditionally, no, I agree with you, but I, I think traditionally, master plans aren't about funding, they're about vision.
Well, not nothing, that's not.
But you're right, things don't happen unless there's a plan for hiring and funding. And in a small town, things don't happen unless there are people that are willing to step up and play and make them happen, because we just don't have the personnel to do it at the time.
Right, but you know, like, so all of that visioning language is not like.
But you have to start with pie in the sky before you pair it back and, and get, no, you do. That anybody who's ever done brainstorming knows, you don't think about possible brainstorming, brainstorm and then you.
I know that, but on the other hand, I think it's, um, what are you brainstorming about? You know, are you brainstorming about the details or are you brainstorming about the funding levels?
That's fair, but sometimes you get sidetracked, if that's a thing that happens.
That's true. We all like take the long. That's true, we all like pink little blocks.
And, you know what, I know, I'm not. I love the pie in the sky idea of, of like sidewalks, but sorry, really?
Well, when, yeah, I mean, it's, when you think about, uh, some, the last, uh, master plan, you know, talking about bike gyms in town, and the bike path, and this is kind of not happening, and, you know, there's no way to have a bike path in certain parts.
It's not realistic, a lot of roads.
Right, so.
On the road.
And I, that comes from someone whose husband bikes on the right course.
Yeah, once was enough.
So, as far as capital plan goes, what's the plan?
What's the plan?
Well, we're, we're trying to fill, you know, Frank is working on, on.
You're, you're working on.
Giving more detail.
Getting more detailed, getting it really, like, have we considered everything that we might need to fund?
So maybe we go to each, and it sounds like it's what you've already been doing, but we go to each department
Mm-hmm.
and say, you know, this is what you have on the capital plan, can you think of any other, maybe, is there a limit, like five thousand dollars?
Well, I, I don't think that is, I don't think that is the way I would approach it.
No, I, I mean, I, I think.
How would you do it?
Well, I think what we did today was really good, we went and we got to know better what, how the department runs, and who's working, and, I mean, I had never seen these trucks.
Which department? But my, my point being.
But to say, I, I, I wanna get, take a step back and let people see what they're asking for in the context of all the other things that people are asking for, you know? And then, we can talk about what their priorities are, and how they fit or don't fit with the real, very realistic thing. You know, we could raise taxes, double taxes, you know, we could get everything we ever wanted, but that's not what any of us has to do. But, uh, this is just my approach to, and I think Frank and I are working together well, we both have the same, um, point of view, and.
Well, I think the first, you know, it's about what people want, but also what we already have.
Yeah.
You know, so is everything that we have already reflected in here?
Right.
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, I, I understand, yeah, I, that's a question we need to put with your department.
Yeah.
And what's, you know, maybe, maybe they thought, well, I didn't put it on the capital plan, because it's, it's only a twenty thousand dollar radio system or something like that.
Right.
No, that needs, and I don't know what the limit is.
Right.
But we, we need to make department heads aware that we have to put, you know, any significant cost on the capital plan, so that it can be reflected, and we can know.
Yeah, so we can.
The copier was eight, you know, and printers are four, so that's pretty low down on, compared to a hundred and something others, you know, engine one, six hundred.
And actually, I, and that, that's an interesting thing, because I, I believe that most tech items are not even now considered capital. They're, they don't even sound an appreciation, they're just replaceable items.
It depends, usually anything that, when I was five thousand or ten thousand, it was a ten thousand, everything I, I.
Yeah, which we made, you know, a desktop, two thousand dollar machine, just.
No, those were expensive, yeah, those were expensive.
Pardon?
But servers and network, I think, more like capital.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
So every roof, I mean, every roof should really, even if they're thirty-year roofs, right, it's something that the town owns that could be replaced, right?
Chat. Yeah.
Well.
So you, you're, just, just generally speaking, you, you, uh, all four of us that are at this meeting are in agreement about our approach to the capital plan and the work that we're gonna do, and especially when you appoint somebody new.
And I, I love that you're doing that, and that you started with the highway department is great, and was it really?
No, it's a very important one.
Yeah, it was great, of course.
First, um, you learned about some of the challenges they face every day that we can take for granted.
It seems very articulate, and Paul was thinking, um, funny, so, it was an easy meeting to have.
I got it really interesting when I went up there and talked to them, and they were like, what?
Yeah.
To me, they still all look like large yellow things, but.
They're red now.
They're red.
Oh, they're red.
They're red now.
They're red now, you know what?
So, um, six o'clock, do we have more work to do on any of, uh, projects, except for us to tell you, uh, perhaps, uh, that we think everybody's great? Correct me if I'm wrong in speaking for you, are you thinking?
No, I, I think we had a good conversation, we went back and we talked about all of them, and I think that we've narrowed the dam to two.
We mostly think, um, we, we were looking for someone with not a lot of history in our recommendations, you know, in the recent past, because I think it's good to be forward-thinking in that department, you know, who has really the kind of skills that we need, which is number crunching, building budgets, uh, also able to, um, work with us, and also able to, uh, reach good solutions and compromises with, and so we were looking for someone who may have served recently, or not, you know, like, what experience on boards do they already have? The other thing that came up was that Hillol said that he's not interested in running, running, so in other words, if he were the choice.
It would just be the end of it.
It would just be like, oh, we were just getting a seat, and now we're gonna have an election. Um, so to just make all this very short, we, uh, think that Eileen would, in my opinion, I, I think she would be really a good energy source and huge amount of knowledge, um, and we think Roger, who already ran and has demonstrated this, uh, interest would be our second choice, if that's, or equal choice?
Well, yeah. Equal choice, I mean, I think both of them could do the job, you know, we talked a little bit about Roger and the election, you know, he wanted to do it in the finance. He did, you know, he had a good amount of, but, you know, it wasn't like.
Wasn't like you, Susan, that's what he said.
Yeah, that's what it was like for you, Susan, and, you know, you're not your own model now. So, you know, we wanted to hear your opinion, and you were dogged, you know.
All right, um, so we, I had it on the agenda for so many weeks, and I, and I finally took it off, because you guys were in the middle of it. Um, and we could add it back, once I asked if we should add it back, but we, we just have a very busy meeting tomorrow, two meetings and a lot on the agenda. But I will put it on the agenda for next week. Um, and with Susan and Scott, and I will discuss it, and appreciate your preliminary, or your, your, your recommendations, um. And we'll go from there, uh, so.
We did our, we did our job, you know, we had a lot of fun talking to everybody, except unfortunately, Dawn, we didn't talk to, we had to rely on the fact that we already knew and did well, but. Yeah, everybody, you know, there's a, it's hard to, uh, write the minutes, because I had to keep writing it, laughter, laughter, we really did.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
All right. Uh, make a motion that the finance committee adjourn this meeting of the joint meeting.
I second the motion.
And the finance committee, you vote unanimously to adjourn this meeting?
And.
I vote aye.
Yeah, so you adjourn, and I'll vote yes in the motion to adjourn for select board.
Yes.
Susan, yes, meeting adjourned at, uh, six P M, and, uh, all right.
Six.
For your work, yes.
Yeah, well, you know.